We're good, Joe. We're good, Joe.
Good morning. It's nine o'clock, September thirteenth, 2021, and our regular Commissioners' Court meeting is now in session. First item on the agenda is roll call by our county clerk, Mary Jane Bravial Benoit.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners.
Morning.
Judge Radsmo.
Present.
Commissioner Mendoza.
Present.
Commissioner Lisondo.
Present.
Commissioner Solis and Commissioner Garza.
Present.
We have a question.
Thank you, Mary Jane. Next item is our invocation by Pastor Roger Miller, Commissioners' Court Chapter Three, Ryan.
Good morning.
Good morning, Pastor Miller.
If everyone would value your heads with me as we open our services in prayer. Father, we come together today to thank you for the gift of life which you provided through your son and his work in this world. Encourage us, Father, to remember the great teachings of Christ, especially when he reminds us, "Blessed are merciful, for they shall receive mercy." Allow us to truly understand that mercy is not an attitude, but an action. But, Father, we are also come here today to seek the assurance of your involvement in the affairs of this county. So today, Father, we seek your great gifts of wisdom, compassion, and understanding. Prepare our leaders this day with a clarity of thought and a clarity of purpose which will guide our community through the days that lie ahead. Allow us never to forget from where the true governing power lies as we seek to align our purposes and our planes with your guidance for this community. And again, Father, bless and prosper the work of this court as they listen to you in all matters. We pray these things today in the name of our Savior, Christ Jesus. Amen.
Amen. A place to lead you to the Lord. And to the Holy Spirit. One nation of God.
Item number four, Commissioners' Communications. Want to share with the court. I spoke with our fire chief. He would be going to be in a training this morning, so he did provide his monthly report. And basically, the vaccinations. He was mentioning as the fire department continues to provide vaccines to the community and testing also. This past week, a total of the Moderna vaccines that were given to the public were 190. COVID tests administered during this past two-week period was 766. And then he mentioned that the vaccine availability in Zapata County, Zapata County Fire Department will be available. The vaccinations are Monday, Wednesday, Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The first, second, and third doses are available. The CDS is also providing vaccine vaccinations there Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And Saturday and Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. First, second, and third doses available to those who are eligible. The National Guard is also helping out with the vaccination. They'll be here on Tuesdays only from 12:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. And they both will offer the Moderna and the Pfizer. DSHS continues to provide vaccinations. And Daniel's Pharmacy also Wednesdays and Thursdays and Fridays provides vaccination. And as far as COVID testing, we're down at the fire department is the actual providing testing at the community center Tuesdays and Thursdays, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. There's a note here that Gateway Clinic is no longer testing. And Daniel's Pharmacy is not testing until further notice. These were some information that our fire chief wanted to share with the public. I think as far as the number of tests that have been conducted in our community so far during the pandemic, 19,162 tests have been conducted. Confirmed positive, 1,759. Negative, 17,803. And we still have active cases of 131. And unfortunately, we, our debt continue to increase. We're up to 44 deaths in our community. So this pandemic is still with us and needs to be careful. As far as the percentages, vaccines, 12 and over first dose, 79.49%, almost 78. Second dose, 67.42%. So I think our public, the public is still continuing to get vaccinated. So our numbers keep going up. So that will certainly help us in the future. 65 and over first dose, 86% of our seniors have been vaccinated. And second, fully vaccinated is 77.65%. So I think our numbers continue to increase as far as our vaccination rates. Well, that's good. And our numbers have, unfortunately, it's still around. But I think the community is taking this seriously. And we, you know, every week I see the reports. And we do have some positive cases, but they're not overwhelming. So that's all good news. But it's still around. Still, you need to be careful. I think I had something else to share as far as, oh, the Congressman Cuéllar will be in Zapata this week on Thursday to take some announcements on some funding that the county will be receiving. The broadband will grant, a $5 million grant for broadband. And he will make the announcement at the San Antonio Community Center on September the sixteenth at 10:00 in the morning. And he also wants to make an announcement on the Chester Shores Water Department. Their department applied for a grant, I think, close to a million dollars. And they will have received funding. So he will be down to make that announcement around 11:30, 11:45 at the San Antonio Water, I mean, Chester Shores Water Tribe. So excuse me on that. So that is good to see the department come down and see how, what else he can provide for us.
And was that grant been pending for a while, Judge? For the Chester Shores Water Tribe?
They had some, because of, I guess, the cost of materials, there was a spike in the amount of the overall cost of projects. But they were able to bring additional funding to the grant. So instead of, I think initially it was over $750,000, it's up to a million dollar funding. So that's really good for the Chester Shores Water Tribe.
Start rolling.
Yeah, I think, sure, we got the court, we had approved some emergency funding. They haven't finalized it yet. I think they're going to go ahead and wait for the grant. So, but it's, I think there will be some major improvements. I think another thing that I heard from the Chester Shores Water District is they are, have switched over to, I guess, the digital meters, water meters also. And so that, I think that will be an improvement for them. So they went ahead and did that project also. We've got a fishing tournament this weekend, I believe, Commissioner. As far as, with Jane Bentley mentioned to me that there's a...
There's a private, private club. There's a good hosting tournament here.
I think it's the San Antonio Best Club. Is that correct?
San Antonio Metro.
Yeah, San Antonio Metro. It will be here this weekend, so.
We'll have some traffic coming in and hopefully get some impact to our restaurants and hotels.
Very well. Any other comments?
Judge, we are hosting a Flush Vaccine Clinic on Wednesday here at the courthouse for all employees.
And CBS is going to be...
CBS is going to be providing the vaccines for us.
That's good. Is our camera system working this morning?
No, it's frozen. Trying to...
The recording is working, but the camera is frozen.
The voice is working. The video is...
There you go.
Ava, hold on. See if it gets reloaded.
We were also expecting some weather this week, but I believe it's, I guess, misty. In a good way is good. In a bad way, we need some rain.
Yeah.
We won't have any significant weather coming our way.
Where did the rain come from?
It moved further east.
Oh, okay.
So we'll need some water and pot and lake, but not this event. We move on to public comment. Any other communications, Commissioners? If not, we'll move on to a public comment. This section provides the public the opportunity to address the Commissioners' Court on any items on the agenda. Any members of the public who want to address the court at this time? If not, we'll move on to item number six, approval of invoices. What's in your package? We had invoices from August the twentieth, 2021, through September the ninth, 2021, for a total of $1,402,500 and three cents. Motion by Commissioner Agasa to approve invoices presented. Seconded by Commissioner Mendoza. Any discussion? Although the fair is the eye. Eye. Motion carries. Item number seven is approval of Treasury report.
Motion to approve this.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, seconded by Commissioner Agasa. Mr. Salinas advised me that he had a pending engagement and will be with us to provide a report. But he has provided it in our package. And I think some of the highlights, I guess, that we usually goes through is our revenue accounts. You know, our front page. Where do we start? It usually starts on... Yes, on page eleven, some of our rents from our building. I think we started renting out our facility. I guess the Zapata Community Center has brought in a small amount of revenue. The funds from our elected officials, our county clerks, is up to 121% of budget revenues. So you've done well this year, Murphy.
Yes, we have.
Our district clerk is also at 105% of revenues. Our ordinance is 172% of our budgeted expected revenues. We're up to $1,380,000 in revenues. Our sales tax continues to provide special benefit to our community. We're at 110% of budgeted revenues with one month ago. So we're at $2,268,77. Our landfill is above expected revenue at 132%, at $318,000. Our jail, the sheriff continues to bring in those revenues. I think you mentioned that, morning Sheriff, that you had a good amount of revenue for this month that keeps increasing?
Yes, this month was $194,800.
So that'll put you right at what we're expecting?
Yeah.
Sheriff, so after a slow start because of COVID, you've managed to fill that jail up and the revenues coming in?
Yes, and we hope even full. And right now, we're doing very...
Thank you, Sheriff. And then our EMS is at 75%, 74.9% of the expected revenues. Our JPs continue to bring in substantial revenues to the county and increasing one up to, well, for the, I guess, 11 months of the budget here, has brought in $267,792.92. JP two, $249,750. JP three, $107,548. And JP four, $110,273. And this has certainly been a good boost to our road and bridge department.
Resident revenue, Judge?
Yes, certainly during tough economic times, it certainly helped your department. So I've got a motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number eight is approval of checks issued. And we had checks from eight, 2020, to 21, through nine, nine, 2021, for a total of $1,402,500.32.
Motion to approve.
Motion move.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, seconded by Commissioner Agasa. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number nine is tax assistance collector, the supplemental report. Tax collector. Morning, Commissioner Mendoza.
Morning, Judge Commissioner.
Call before the podium.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Aye.
Can you say again, good morning, Commissioners' Court? Collection rate for taxes from the tax office, 20, September, I'm going, August, 2020, we're at 90.90%. That's our side.
Yes.
Your side is almost at 97%. I mean, what was anticipated from the county?
Okay.
Yeah, because it's different.
So this includes as a school tax also or not?
No.
This is just the county?
No, this is just the county.
Okay.
Okay. Current collection?
Well, I mean, that's outstanding. I think we base our budget on 92. I think so. We're saying we're at 92.
About 90, yeah, about 97% is what that we told you.
Okay.
So.
Who's your pastor prediction?
Yes. Well, yes.
I think with some of the liquid income accounts that came in, I think, your rural taxes.
This is, this is...
They're just occurring?
This is just occurring.
Very good. Yes, these are all good numbers.
But yes, they're around. So liquid taxes, we've done very well. Right now, I'm showing that we're over the one digit.
Very well. It certainly helps.
That's on, that's on the table. Okay, for the current taxes, it's general fund. We brought in $86,966.66. Interest and sinking, we brought in $32,601.59. On the market, $1882. Special road and bridge, we brought in $8,968.90. For a total of $148,148.89. That's pretty good for August, because we should have pretty slow. Okay, other fines and, other fees and collections. Alcoholic beverage, we brought in $175. Tax assist tickets, $20. Hotel motel tax, $4,587.82. Coffees and faxes, $60. Interest earnings, $1785. Net collection, okay, with $153,000.956. Check made out to the treasury is $133,418.5. Hotel motel, year-to-date, we've also, I think, made a goal of 100,721.68. And you'll have your dividends total, your debits total, refunds, on hand. And that's...
Thank you, Commissioner Mendoza. We thank the taxpayers of Zapata County, even during these difficult times they've come to support us and we try to provide services to our community. Commissioners, we've got some presentations and proclamations. I want to jump to item number forty-four is a proclamation declaring September 2021 Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And we do have a proclamation to read. And we also have a special guest here amongst us. So I'll read the proclamation and then... This is a proclamation for Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas childhood cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in children. And whereas one in 285 children in the United States will be diagnosed by their twentieth birthday. And whereas 46 children per day, or 16,790 children per year, are diagnosed with cancer in the U.S. And whereas there are approximately 40,000 children on active treatment at any given time. And whereas the average age of diagnosis is six years old, compared to 66 for adults' cancer diagnosis. And whereas 80% of childhood cancer patients are diagnosed late with metastatic disease. And whereas, on average, there's been a 0.6% increase in incidence per year since the 1970s, resulting in an overall incidence increase of 24% over the last 40 years. And whereas 2/3 of childhood cancer patients will have chronic health conditions as a result of their treatment toxicity, with one quarter being classified as severe to life-threatening. And whereas approximately 1/2 of childhood cancer families rate the associated financial toxicity due to out-of-pocket expenses as considerable to severe. And whereas in the last 20 years, only four new drugs have been approved by the FDA specifically treat childhood cancer. And whereas the National Cancer Institute recognizes the need for research needs of childhood cancer and the associated need for increased funding to carry this out. Whereas hundreds of nonprofit organizations at the local and national level, including the American Childhood Cancer Organization, are helping children with cancer and their families cope through educational, emotional, and financial support. And whereas researchers and healthcare professionals are diligently dedicating their expertise to treat and cure children with cancer. And whereas too many children are affected by this deadly disease, and more must be done to raise awareness and to find a cure. Now therefore, be resolved that Zapata County, State of Texas, do hereby proclaim that September 2021 is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month and encourage our to observe Childhood Cancer Awareness Month and support this cause that so deeply impacts families in every community across our country.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner, request to approve the, seconded by Commissioner Mendoza. I believe we have a young lady here that has brought a lot of inspiration for our community dealing with this disease and the founder. So Julie Duran and Mr. and Mrs. Duran, I appreciate you for being here, what you all have gone through. You all have brought our community together. And the success of Julie fighting this disease and coming out on top. So if you'll do the honors of taking a picture with us as we commemorate Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, I would appreciate that. Commissioner? Yes, we have a proclamation, so... And we'll take a picture up here then. Thank you, Julie, for being with us. I don't have to get back to school. It's important.
Those are good pictures.
Appreciate it, yes. Yes, Sheriff. Right in the center. Very far, it's... Thank you. Thank you for being with us. Thank you. We've got some other young individuals amongst the meeting this morning. And item number twelve is to introduce Zapata County Health Youth Ambassadors. Reprised by our Agrolife Extension Agent, Azul Rodriguez. Good morning.
I think the kids were probably hoping for this to be the last agenda item, Judge, so they could skip the whole day here.
Is that...
There's no classes today.
Oh, that's true. There's no classes. Never mind. We can take one.
Well, I'm sure they've got busy schedules and...
Good morning, Judge Commissioners.
Good morning. Morning.
I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Rizetti. He's going to introduce our youth health ambassadors.
Okay.
And that was short presentation for them.
Very well. Thank you for being with us.
Good morning, you guys. Good morning. I'm going to just introduce you guys to our youth ambassadors for this year. We have Amphenia Garcia, she's a senior. Jenna Riadiad, she's a senior. Benny Bosano, also a senior. Nadina Rodriguez, she's a freshman. Isabel Martinez, junior. And Danisa Gutierrez, junior. And we have three more that we're missing today. But just wanted to introduce you guys to them. They've been doing, they went through some workshops over the summer, some trainings, and they're going to be working on some projects. And they're actually going to talk about a project that we're going to be working on soon.
Good. We'd love to hear what you all are working on.
Who's going to go first? Oh, and I forgot. We have Landon Martinez, he's a freshman. Victoria Garcia, she's a junior.
Senior.
And Rajiv Palis, a freshman as well.
Good morning.
Good morning. We're trying to obtain community grants and technical assistance promoting increased physical activity levels and improve access to healthy foods.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The Texas A&amp;M Agrolife Extension is working on wellness environment programs and associing the WOW-E Community Challenge, which is an initiative to jumpstart community efforts through quick action projects. Good morning.
Good morning.
The Texas A&amp;M Agrolife WOW-E believes that healthy communities take a long time to build and sustain, but also believes that quick actions can be the spark for long-term progress.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Our quick action projects will show changes in health development locally to improve physical activity levels and access to healthy foods for residents of all ages, backgrounds, and abilities required to optimize.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This year, the Texas A&amp;M Agrolife Wow-E Community Challenge funded projects that achieved one of several outcomes. Our project will establish health, nutrition, and physical activity standards in community places and implement efforts to establish new or improved active transportation. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All projects will seek to be completed by November eighth, 2021. The after-action reporting deadline is November 12, 2021.
Very well. So, and I guess, you know, I'm going to meet with Mr. Strabby here, but I guess the funding for some of these projects, you're working with Agrolife and here's time to get some grants to...
Yes, so this community academy is going to be funded through the WOW-E program, which is funded through the CDC. And then we're going to be doing some demonstration projects. One of the projects that they came up with is temporary pedestrian lanes over here by Romeo and Frodis Park and South Elementary. So then we'll use that information, whatever information we gather, to apply for other grants that we could later use here in the community, so.
I think the Commissioners have been trying to, you know, with the limited resources that we have to enhance our park areas. I think Romeo and Frodis Park is certainly a nice area to begin with and...
And, you know, we spoke last week, so the WOW-E program, the specialists, they're here to, you know, provide resources and any information that you guys might need or assistance, which is, that is known.
I think when the youth become involved, it certainly adds a little bit more oomph to the projects. And I think the adults listen when you all speak and certainly want to make everyone happy and improve our community. So I'm glad you're involved in these projects. And we will certainly support any way we can to help better our community.
Appreciate it. Hopefully, we can take a picture.
Yes. Actually, the doctors will have you there. Thank you for being with us here this morning. We have another item, reprised by Azul Rodriguez. And that's item number eleven is to introduce the new Agrolife Extension BLT agent, Javier Alonso.
Once again, good morning, Judge Commissioners.
Can you, what BLT, I'm thinking of sandwich. What is that?
Wait, we're not in a... I'm sorry, I'm here, and this is how we have... BLT is our Better Living for Texans program.
Okay.
So it's a...
SNAP.
SNAP, SNAP benefit education program, so it's federally funded. We used to have a BLT... Um, we used to have a BLT assistant here and she left a few years ago.
I remember, yes, sure.
And, uh, now, yes, I mean, so now the, the program has a full-time extension agent. Um, Javier is, uh, works, uh, half, half of his duties are in North County, half runs Zapata.
Very good.
So he's been helping us out probably what, like, three months, four months?
Um, six months more or less.
Six months.
Origin from the radio or?
That's correct, originally from the radio.
Yes.
Uh, and he hit the ground running, uh, we just hadn't, um, put ourselves on the agenda to come introduce him officially, but he's already been working with Commissioners Sando and San Ignacio and, uh, he probably saw, and here's the, the community garden that was handled.
Yes.
So we're excited, he's gonna be helping us out a lot, he's gonna be helping us out at the schools, uh, with our, our, our gardens at the schools, and we're hopefully gonna start a few more community gardens around here in Zapata.
Very well.
Maybe even try to do it somewhere in, in San Juan or Ropero.
We've got a year-round growing season here.
Yes, sir. So, uh, we're excited to have him and we just wanted to give him to, to meet you all and, and so you could put a.
Welcome.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yes, and I, I know that Javi motivated a lot of people in San Ignacio, there's a lot of families actually growing their own, uh, gardens in San Ignacio, Javi, you know, Javi and all of them, we did a walk from, from San Ignacio and.
Now, Ms. Omen, of course, I appreciate, um, you have, helping us with this, uh, you know, the foundation for that garden in that area and for being so active and I hope we eventually, um, we get all the commissioners involved to put these projects, it would be looking great.
Thank you.
Now, thank you, Ms. Omen.
Thanks for continuing working with me.
Thank you, Jesse. Jesse, thank you.
You want a picture?
Sure.
You're gonna bring your camera?
We are gonna be all over that.
It's always good to have, uh, young people in the projects and, of course, I hope you guys take more interest in county government, it, it really is very interesting, um, and hopefully you guys get more involved with it.
I think we've got one more report, uh, item number ten is to certify the order for annual compensation for the county auditor, assistant auditor, and court reporter. Good morning, Gonzalez.
Good morning, Judge.
Commissioner.
Uh, we have our compensation meeting, uh. August twenty third on Monday, uh, to comply with government code section one five two point nine zero five, and what the judge did was, uh, he went along with, with what was on the proposed budget with the rest of the county in line with, so, uh, uh, county auditor, Jim Gonzalez, compensation at sixty-five thousand, uh, and forty dollars, deputy auditor, uh, Reptal Mesa, Es Mesa, thirty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars, deputy auditor, Deon Yavanas, thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars, uh, and then the court recorder, the judge, since he's part-time, only did it at half of the thousand and forty, which was a five-twenty, and, uh, coming up to twelve thousand, eight hundred and forty-two, and it's already been recorded with the district, uh, sir.
Correct, yes, and, and the, I guess in our proposed budget, we, we have included a modest cost of living increase to all employees and elected officials, uh.
If that was to change, you know, I'll, 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 I'll talk to the judge.
Would he be on your issue? Well, yeah, 'cause since, since we filed that proposed budget, we've got some news of some, uh, loss in, in potential revenues that, that we were counting on.
Yes, yes, so, yeah, see, I'm, I'm, I'm more, more sure that.
Okay.
He's willing to comply, he's just trying to follow what the judge.
I appreciate the judge and, yeah, that's what, uh, have they proposed a modest increase to all cost of living, to all county codes.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Does this court matter to you, Judge, if it's a fire action?
Any action, it is an order, so I, I think, given that, uh, our next hearing, if, if the court decides to, uh, pursue the proposed budget or do increases or deny increases because of, of our resources, then I, I, the, the judge may be willing to, uh, to reissue another order, uh, but certainly this is, is, is kind of what, what it is.
And I'll talk.
There, there's no one else.
He's just trying, he's trying to go.
I understand, there, there's no one else or buts or it's just.
Yep, but the only thing is, we don't give you any rate, you're not gonna have any rates either.
Yeah, that's what we're saying.
All right.
Well, he can't issue another order.
Well, exactly.
Yeah, that's what we're saying.
Do you ever have a story denied?
Yeah, I know.
Right. But, but he's willing to work with you.
Okay. Let's see, let's see that they've got another item, uh, on, uh. So item number thirty-one, Commissioner, is that these, and we, these are action items we will deliberate and consider action on the following items. Item number thirty-one is to request the use of a four-heat arena and to waive fees for the four-heat work, but, um.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I would thank you.
Mendoza, second, by Commissioner Garza. So.
Just a real quick note on that, uh, the, the, Mrs. Omen started a, a riding club, barrel racing club, and, uh, we started talking a little bit and we, I convinced her, I think. Uh, I, I shouldn't need much convincing, but, uh, we're gonna incorporate that club into a four-inch club.
That's right.
So we're, we're in the process, they've already, uh, submitted the application, um, for, for the club to be chartered, so, uh, that's gonna offer another opportunity for our youth here in Zapata.
We've got a lot of good riders, horse riders in our county.
Well, we've got three already in our club participating in junior high and high school rodeo.
And good road.
We have one little girl who's never took her head out of her iPad and now she's cleaning the horse's hooves.
Very well.
She went it there your way and now she's out there like actually getting dirty, putting big foot, the horse's.
That's a really good.
Historically, we've had a horse club and that kind of went away, so, uh, luckily they're willing to help us out and, uh, I'm gonna do my best to.
We have to keep that tradition alive here in our county.
And just for y'all to know, we're doing it free of charge for the kids and that's why we're thinking, well, maybe that, the commissioners could help us out also.
So your next school owner should be to get all the commissioners a horseback.
Yes, for the next parade, I have four horses.
There's too many people that wanna see this.
My names are bad.
He's a pony.
I, I, he's a, he's a pony.
And I went to the barrel racing that you all had. And, uh, we actually do the national anthem on horseback with a flag and honoring the flag every time, you know, like.
I think there's too many people that wanna see this while the horse, so we won't be up there. That's actually.
Well, good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Got a motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll move on to, uh, this will be record here, uh, action agenda we will deliberate and consider action, item number thirteen is to approve earnest money contract for the purchase of additional acreage adjacent to the expansion of the, for the expansion of the, of the Sunny Massa landfill.
Motion to approve this.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, second, by Commissioner Garza, uh, Commissioner, the, the earnest money contract, and I'll have him to per- uh, review it before we, we approve it, I guess, with that condition, uh, if we are, uh, entering into an agreement to purchase a hundred and seventy-seven acres, uh, adjacent to our current landfill, and, and if, uh, there is a specification that, uh, we need to, uh, I guess, uh, provide three boars, I believe, is Mr. Science here? I think we need to have some boring down to make sure that, uh.
No war.
Yes, uh, there, that the, if the land will be suitable, uh, once that, uh, takes place, uh, the owners have, uh, agreed to have a closing date, uh, up, up until December seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, so that, that gives us plenty of time to, to do that.
And the, the purchasing funds, too, are part of this particular obligation?
Yes, uh, we, we have, we did go out and request funding, uh, with that, uh, certificate of obligation loan that, uh, we are in the process of being funded, so, uh, I think all is good to go, uh, that landfill, uh, we've got on our current, after we may have four to five years of, of service on it, life service on it, so we need to move on this, uh, because it does take some time to, uh, to prepare those sites, but hopefully this, this site will meet all the conditions and we will have a landfill for generations there in this site, uh, so, uh, the purchase price for the hundred and seventy-seven acres is, uh, seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, so, uh, given that, uh, we've got utilities already present adjacent to it, I think it's, it's, uh, something that is reasonable, uh, so, we've got a motion in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number fourteen is to review and discuss the twenty-twenty redistricting preliminary draft report submitted by Mr. Rolando Elvios and Associates, P L L C. Uh, Commissioners, uh, as it was, uh, certainly, when I first saw the report, disappointing, uh, that our census, uh, actually dropped, uh, considerably from our last census, which was in twenty-ten, I think, given the COVID and other, uh, maybe the reluctance of some of our, uh, resident citizens to participate, uh, certainly affected our numbers, uh, you know, you know, meeting with school officials, our schools are still, uh, seem to be, uh, growing in enrollment, so I don't think this is an adequate picture of, of what county residents are in our community, but it, it is what it is, we, uh, according to, to the preliminary reports, our census twenty-twenty population for Zapata County is, uh, thirteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine, uh, residents, that is about a thousand, uh, residents less than our twenty-ten census. It, it will have a, uh, pretty dramatic impact in, in funding, uh, for our community for the next ten years, so it is certainly a disappointing, uh, day, uh, to, to see this report, uh, given that I, I, I feel that we haven't lost, uh, that, those type of numbers in our community, I, I think our, our community has been growing slowly, but it has continued to grow during the last ten years, and certainly not to see a, a thousand dollar, I mean, a thousand, uh, uh, resident drop in, in population, uh, and as you know, federal funding, uh, it all comes back to census, uh, numbers, so we can expect less funding, uh, for our community for the next ten years, uh, but it is what it is, certainly, some, some of the, uh, uh, part of the report shows which precinct grew or which, uh, precincts lost residents, it appears that precincts, uh, three and four gained, uh, a few residents compared to precincts one and two, so there is a disparity, uh, between, uh, precincts as far as population, uh, with, uh, I guess, a recommendation by Mr. Vios, and, and of course, we can bring him back, we don't have to make a decision today as to how we, uh, proceed, but apparently, to get ideal numbers of, of residents within each precinct, uh, precincts three and four may have to give up some of their, uh, residents, uh, depending on, on what the law states, what, what, if, if it's, what, what is required, so I, I think as we gather more information, uh, I think most of us here would rather just leave the, the boundaries as they are, but we may be required, uh, to, to make some changes, uh.
Then, uh, precinct one would be willing to acquire some additional area, possibly, I know we've talked about the possibility of, uh, making, making over, if it was time, Mrs. San Ignace.
I, I think you would need a little over a hundred residents to, to come, uh, uh, to the numbers of, of precinct three, and two and four, also, I think, but we'll see what, what, uh, the actual law requires us to do, Commissioners, but it's a good start, uh, these are the numbers, unfortunately, they're not good numbers, uh, but, I guess, like they say, it is what it is.
I do have to say, Judge, that I was a little disappointed with, of course, the involvement and effort put through by the, uh, US Census Bureau here in Zapata, I, I did see the efforts implemented to other communities, and I feel that they let this be not, it was a bit more than our community, uh, so that, that in itself is disappointing, uh, but hopefully in, in another ten years, that'll, that'll change.
Yeah, and, and the COVID played, I think, a major part of, of many people during that time, uh, they don't wanna open doors, they don't wanna, I mean, it, it was a very difficult period for all of us, uh, last year while the census was taking place, and there, this was not a, a good response from our community, but it does have ramifications and, and we will be seeing them, and I think it's in funding, uh, to our community, so I, I would say no action on this one, Commissioners. I can't agree with you.
Hold on, please, uh, just so the court can know, I would like to stay the way I am on my prison for the simple reason, they're, they're cutting me off, good streets and nobody wants the arrows, if, if, if that's the case, I'll stay the way I am.
So your preference would be to.
Stay.
And, and that may be, uh, uh, possible that, that we can stay, keep the same boundaries, uh, I haven't spoken to Mr. Vios to see if, if there's a directive as to how, I, I believe we, the court can decide, uh, it doesn't have to be a thousand for each, uh, precinct, it doesn't have to be exactly, but there, there is a disparity between.
I see it may have to be thirteen percent.
Yes, and I think we're over that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're about sixteen percent over.
Yeah, I think on fourteen.
Yeah. Yeah, so there, there has to be some adjustments, but, but we'll see how, when we move forward.
Well, mentioning, you saw the culture, uh, Mendoza, so you can now start thinking about getting arrows too.
If we have enough area to hover there, we can get the others.
We'll have to decide, we'll, we'll work through Mr. Vios to guide us and, and see how, what the final, uh, I guess, plan will be of final redistricting, but, uh, so I, I would suggest no action on this, this, uh, mo- uh, this item this morning, and we'll, uh, to get informational items for, for the public to know that we certainly did not bring in the numbers that we, that we had, so no action on, on item number fourteen. Item number fifteen is to request the use of the Zapata County Pavilion on September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one for a speaking engagement by retired ICE agent Victor Avila.
Motion moved.
Motion by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Mendoza, any discussion?
Judge, uh, I thought she was gonna be here.
I didn't see you.
Would you like to do a little presentation?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just brought, brought today, he's the author of A Agent Under Fire, and, um, aside from Victor being a, a, a former ICE agent, a specialist and expert on border security and, uh, child trafficking, the cartel, he has a lot to share with our community and I'm just glad to be able to bring him through my friendship with him, and of course, we all know the tie with his friendship with, uh, Jaime Zapata, may he rest in peace, um, Jaime, I just wanna share, he was a friend of mine and a friend to many in our community, uh, Zapata, or she says Zapata County, Falcone, was a second home to him and his brother in Statesman, endless amount of, uh, you know, days and months, you know, fishing and hunting and spending time with their family in Falcone, so this is just as much a home to them as, um, Brownsville is, so, um, I really appreciate, um, you all offering the use of the pavilion, and I think many people in the community, including Jaime's family, will appreciate that too.
What, what time is, uh, the picture?
It'll be on Tuesday the fourth week at six P M.
Six P M.
Mm-hmm, and it's free for the public.
Very well.
Whatever we can do for you, just let us know.
Yes, and.
Maybe some of our Congress can work with the volume of your home and, and circulate it.
That would be wonderful, I'd like to invite the sheriff and the deputies and everybody in the community, I think it's wonderful, he's a great guy, and he has so much to share with us, thank you.
Thank you so much.
We're, we're having the meals served there right every day. Pavilion, uh, so we can then, right, drive, have the, the sort of.
We'll make sure to make the adjustments.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate you. Item number sixteen, uh.
Judge, could we take, uh, item sixteen through?
Through twenty-three?
Through twenty-four?
Twenty-four, I'll make a motion to approve.
I think they're just a formality on changes in, uh, personnel.
Okay, I'll, I'll just read them out, just for the record, uh, item sixteen is to promote Jeflin Norvegas, uh, ten dash five sixty, slot number six to ten, dash five sixty, slot number eight, at forty-two thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars, starting July third, twenty twenty-one. Item number seventeen is to promote Alonso Vies, patrol sergeant, from ten five sixty, slot number thirteen, to ten five sixty, slot number twelve, at thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight, starting August the eighth, twenty twenty-one. Item number eighteen is to promote Alejandro Barrera, from, uh, ten five sixty, slot number eight, to ten five sixty, slot number thirteen, at thirty-five thousand dollars, starting August the eighth, twenty twenty-one. Item number nineteen is to promote Jesu Resendis, from ten dash five six seven, slot number nineteen, to ten five sixty, slot number five, at thirty-five thousand dollars, starting September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Item number twenty is to promote David Moya, lieutenant investigator, from ten dash five sixty, slot number nine, to ten five sixty, slot number six, at thirty-nine thousand, five fifty, starting September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. And twenty-one is to promote Aliam Lopez, narcotics investigator. And twenty-one is to promote Alián Lopez, narcotics investigator, from ten five sixty, the slot number eleven, to ten five sixty, slot number nine, at thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars, starting September thirteen, twenty-twenty-one. Item number twenty-two is to promote, uh, Ramon Arambula, the special crimes investigator, from ten five sixty, slot number eleven, to ten five sixty, slot number nine, at thirty-nine thousand, five fifteen, starting September thirteen, twenty-twenty-one. And item number twenty-three is to promote Christopher Old, K nine investigator, from ten five sixty, slot number fifteen, to ten five sixty, slot number eleven, at thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars, starting September thirteen, twenty-twenty-one. And to promote Ricardo Romo, investigator, from ten five sixty, slot number five, to five, ten five sixty, slot number seven, at thirty-eight thousand, one ninety-eight, starting September thirteen, twenty-twenty-one.
I'll say again, uh, Commissioner, I'll just...
Motion by Commissioner, second by Commissioner Mendoza. What? So funding? Sheriff, I, I got a little dizzy for these...
No, I, uh, I mean, you do the date, uh, budget doesn't change. The bottom line doesn't change. Yes, the bottom line number doesn't change.
So, so there's some vacancies or...
No, the, the whole department is, uh, full at, at this time. They, they own the, what they did was there are some promotions, so they stayed within their allotted budget.
Okay, uh, but the overall funding state, so, so some, I guess, there were some positions that had a higher salary and those were reduced to, to accommodate the other promotion?
Um, no, basically, most of these positions, uh, were originally with a vacancy. And he, uh, is basically bumping up.
Oh, so vacancies paid for all the adjustments?
Yes.
I mean, because we are adding, I, I just want to know where the money's at.
No, we're not, we're not adding anything to the budget. It stays completely the same.
Okay, all right. We got a motion in second. I just want to clarify that, there's no additional funding provided that to... Okay, good. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty-five is to combine the constitutional amendments election to November second, twenty-twenty-one, to fewer precincts. Man, Jane?
Yes, Judge, I want to combine, I need to combine precinct one A, one B, and two A, to their respective commissioners and averages, four precincts for the November election only.
But this is only going to be one time.
Oh, yes, yeah. Well, I have to do it every time, every time I'm going to do this, I have to complete the report.
Yeah, your constitutional amendments are very, uh, little...
Yes, we've got, we have precincts where only the judge and the alternate vote, and that's, you know, it's just too much money.
I'll say again, Commissioner.
Motion by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner, uh, Mendoza. Any discussion, although in favor of the side? Aye, motion carries. Item number twenty-six is to approve the Zapata County Americans with Disabilities Act transportation policy statement.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, second by Commissioner Garza. And do we need to read the statement? I see it's not, no?
You don't need to read it. I'm...
You can read it, I'm not, you can read it.
It's long, it's, it's pretty long. Uh, it's just a policy, uh, policy and procedures for a transportation department that needs to be approved and posted up, made available for...
Very well.
So written and approved.
Oh, and require signature?
We got a motion in second. Thank you. Although in favor of the side?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty-seven is to approve the purchase of a mini refrigerator, microwave, and mini ice maker for the San Ignacio Zapata Water Offices for the amount of five, two hundred and ninety-seven, ninety-eight.
You're like, I have to cover this expense?
Motion move.
Motion. And, and why only minis?
Why me?
Uh, you don't have any cheap pool, sir. Yeah, we need some big there, so. Oh, you just got, you don't have enough space to get a refrigerator?
Well, we do, but it's only for operators, but this is really for this one operator in training that we have. He actually drives from Zapata over there, so he has some work.
Okay.
Just for future reference, you don't have to bring this to...
Yeah, I kind of figured, but it's because somebody said, uh, says I'm doing renovations at my house. I might as well post this, so... So, so let me go and throw it in there.
Okay.
Because you got a book, you got a bunch of big guys in your department, minis is not the work.
I don't know, I don't know, the guilty's.
I didn't know the guilty was here.
I never... We got a motion in the second, although in favor of the side?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And we do have an ice maker at the San Ignacio yard, so we all never did anything, you know, for you to just... It's always open from eight, seven to four, so the guys can just go and...
Great, this one.
We do have a refrigerator.
I believe the ice maker's going to be for the Zapata offices though, uh, because we really don't have anything. So we have to purchase a big glass of ice for the refrigerator, so this would help. And we have some offices that we've seen that have ice makers and they're pretty...
Yeah, we have one at the county shop, and it does come in handy.
It's small, you just fill it with a thing, it's like a bottle and half of water, and it's, you know, that's awesome.
Yeah, and work. Item number twenty-eight is to approve the inquiry into a new water rate study.
I wanted to bring this to, to your attention because I know the last time that we did a rate study was back in twenty-sixteen. Uh, and the water rates they did increased back in twenty-seventeen, soar was in twenty-nineteen. Um, so it's been about five years since we've done the rate study. Uh, prices of chemicals, prices of equipment, material, metal have gone dramatically, so...
Chlorine is becoming very hard to...
Chlorine is, I mean, is going to be, uh, more costly. So I think everything was affected, uh, with this whole COVID, um, uh...
So those rate studies, what we, we did, uh, to, you know, it was required for the funding, we're trying to obtain...
Yes, sir, it was. This is just, uh, you know, it's been five years. Uh, I talked to, uh, Mr. Sissario Vela with police, and he said that he'd be able to assist us, see if we decide to, to...
Is there a cost associated with it?
I don't know yet. So if there is, then, you know, I'll bring that...
I'll just bring in, bring in to see what, what we're getting into, uh...
Judge, I think you're silent. Usually, Sissario Vela works with communities and limited, but what I've seen in other communities is that they provide, uh, the services at no charge to the county. They do charge, but they usually charge to USDA through, or, uh, another Texas, uh, agency, where they pay their company to provide the services to our communities. And so they shouldn't be one for those services. And, and then, but they don't come to the court whether the court wants to approve it or not, they'll bring the fines.
Sure. I think it's important, uh, if, if we decide to, to raise rates, that we can defend what we're doing with rate, rate study. So it's very important to add, uh, it's just, uh, for us to be in the manner to raise rates, uh, and not be able to justify it to a public, certainly. So it's important, I, I just, so that rate study that we have previously done with the funding, that was a five-year, so we, we elapsed that time period already? Yes, sir.
Yes, uh, Judge.
Because we usually adjusted rates for that time period.
Yes, it was for the, um...
Was it retroactive too, or...
No, no, it, it was for the, for the improvements to the, uh, the wastewater treatment plant. And also, I think, what you have at the water plant, where we have the two new facilities. And, uh, so that we could be able to pay for that and, um, pay for those improvements because it was not all a hundred percent grant, a grant loan. So then that would allow to pay that money back, but then, like, uh, Mr.... Let me...
It's money.
Yes, it's money, that's true. So, like, Mr. Dory, what you mentioned is that the cost, we have seen the cost, can all of our construction projects go up where the height is very difficult to find? So it's delaying some of the projects because you have orders that have come in from January, February, and haven't been filled until like maybe June. And then the, the cost of it, they, they have bid it out, have a project that's a, uh, a dollar fifty a foot, and they're buying twenty thousand feet, and then now they're selling it at three dollars a foot. So it's like double the cost. That has...
Everything has gone up.
And the pouring, I, I've seen the pouring being...
We haven't been able to find any for like the pool, the county pool.
Yeah, that, that's right, yeah.
We got notifications a few months ago that, uh, that it would be harder and more expensive to find. Of course, they, they, of course, the party goes to the, you know...
It's a pilot season.
Yeah.
Now, now, you know, the general public already says they pay too much for one.
I already know that, and I didn't even want to put this item up here, but, um, I, you know, I don't want to pull it off more and more just because of the prices that are...
Yeah, well, I mean, does it hurt to see where we're at?
Yeah, so a study, I think, would be, uh, absolutely necessary for us to move forward on any increases in our, in our rates.
Yeah. And proper justification.
Yes, okay.
There's a motion to approve item twenty-eight, is present.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza to approve, second, like, well, to have, uh, I guess, come in with some numbers, I guess.
Yes, to, I guess, solicit the, the cost of the rate study.
Okay, yeah. Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, second, and by Commissioner Garza, although in favor of the side?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item, uh, number twenty-nine is to approve a GPS fleet tracking system for water and wastewater vehicles.
I, I provided everybody with a copy of just this information, this fleet, uh, uh, where I came from, it was through the city, it was the city of Chriskey. And I know that we implemented a pre-tracking system for, for our fleet at that time, which was very beneficial. Uh, not only does it have a GPS tracking, but it also, it monitors the driver behavior. So it, uh, will be able to give us alarms, and there's no wonders, uh, speeding, uh, exit braking, uh, it's also good, uh...
I think it's, uh, it's a very good event.
So, so the total yearly cost of this would be the thirty-seven, seven, seven, forty-eight?
Thirty-seven, seven, seven, forty-eight would be the total cost for the monthly services. We would have to do the initial purchase of each, uh, which is...
Device.
Device, which is, uh, eighty dollars, and it's a one-time fee per vehicle, um, and...
Did you have enough money that in your budget, you're doing, or is it... Motion to approve this.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, second by Commissioner Garza to...
Judge, I, I would like to do it for, for the whole county.
Yeah, I think, I think it's important to know our employer.
Yeah, exactly.
And will this, uh, will it affect our insurance or not? I mean, will it lower our insurance rates any?
I would need to inquire and ask, uh, talk about how...
Since it, since it monitors driver behavior, I would just say maybe it would have some sort of an impact on...
It, it may.
It, it not only is good for the vehicles, it's also for the equipment, so any type of backhoe, any type of, uh, any type of, uh, tractor equipment or, if you want to put a truck on, it would, it would, it would notify, you know, its location and its movements. Uh, of course, like for vehicles, it's, I think, which is a, a big thing, you know, I know it's hot summers, but when people must leave their vehicles on for extended, uh, periods of time, it's just on and on and on. So these have alarms that will notify, so...
Judge, this would be a good pilot program before we move on to the, to the rest of the panel.
Before we implement it for the...
Yeah.
Get out to the...
Okay, we got a motion in second, although in favor of the side?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Um, so the public will know. I've been getting called, I don't know about the other commissioners and the judge, but I've been getting some calls, and I know that I, I called your message to you about the drinking odor or taste in the water. What can you tell the public, you know, for the newspaper to...
Yeah, the public is that, uh, with, with extreme temperatures that we have and the heat and the amount of water that is being used, there's, there's a lot of demand, so the water's just, uh, you know, is, is, as, as humidity is going down. Uh, and the high heat, what happens actually is, it, it, it'll affect the levels of chlorine. I'm not saying that our chlorine levels are bad because our guys go out there and they test all the time. Because I've been getting calls from four seasons specifically, uh, from this window under two, saying that they had, um, you know, abnormal color in the water, which was like in the filter that had, that was green water. I sent the catch from the water plant to go investigate. It's just, uh, the filters that they had those, in that case, it was outside, so it's getting hit by direct sunlight. So when sunlight hits, uh, 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 water that's, that's been kind of stagnant or there, uh, the, the chlorine levels will start to drop. So it's just the extreme, uh, heat, and of course, the water level that we have, uh, where the water it takes is very low right now. So, um, we're just hoping that the water knows where it is, for one thing, temperatures are going to start dropping, so it's going to...
But as far as it being consumable and being, of course, it is compliant with T C Q, we're, we're getting models required.
Check that all the time because we have to be compliant, especially for the levels of, of chlorine. So everything is good as far as chlorine levels, it's just, of course, the water level and the high heat, so...
One of the areas, I guess, that has a lot of complaints is, of course, it's a short, but that is a separate operation. A lot of people come to the notice that it is a separate operation.
And I know they're doing good, they did get that grant, and they do have the smarties, and they're making all these improvements to their water plant. So, uh, I know their, their quality, their process is being improved.
Yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
Item number thirty is to request a transfer of eight thousand dollars from the tobacco fund to medical supplies.
Do you consider we have money there?
It was like a hundred and forty thousand.
I'll say again, the motion...
Motion by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Mendoza, although in favor of the side?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Chief, I have to reach out to me before you make that.
Okay. Item number thirty-two is to request the use of the softball field in precinct one for the fall Little League and playoffs starting on October fourth, twenty-twenty-one. Uh, Mr. Maria Anguilla, Little League director, she, she came by, uh, last week to, to the office and said, uh, I think she's still the Little League president is what she, is that correct?
No.
No?
Yes.
But that's what she mentioned.
Yes, that's what she said.
Uh, officially, I guess, a little, I know we, we have two leagues in...
Yeah, there's a league, there was, there was, uh, I, I don't remember, Judge, there are other sports teams that utilize the field, so as long as they work together, I mean, I mean...
The more, more kids play, the better, that's what I see it.
I'd rather have kids in the field, and the field to be by itself, so, yeah. Motion to approve this.
Motion, uh, Commissioner Mendoza, second, by Commissioner Garza.
No, no.
Oh.
Second, Judge.
Second by Commissioner, uh, Elison, do you have any discussion, although in favor of the side?
Aye.
Those against?
Against.
Against? Commissioner Garza, it's against. Item number thirty-three, motion carries. Uh, to approve the firm of Premier Engineering and Carlos Corina Vargas and Associates to prepare applications for funding, expansion, and improvements to the Kami Arena. I spoke with Mr. Vargas, and I think they're doing an effort to, uh, improve our Kami, uh, Roadie Arena, I think. Hopefully, we can get funding for that, and, and certainly some ambitious goals, which is good.
Yes, Judge, it, it is, and, and we heard earlier from different participants that, uh, they're looking to do the four-H, uh, rowing club or riding club, and there's, uh, more activity, uh, in, in the arena, it's being utilized quite a bit more. And I know the kids have been traveling sometimes out of town to go compete. And, um, we, we look, they're looking at seeing if there's any funding available for, um, maybe, uh, some expansion on it. And, uh, we would be, I guess, asking for permission to submit an application for, for funding. And if, if there is funding, well, then, we would then come and present what kind of funding there is. And, um, that's basically...
Yeah, so...
It never hurts to ask, right?
To go search.
Motion to approve.
I'll say again, Judge.
Motion by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Mendoza, although in favor of the side?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number thirty-four is to award contract to South Texas Archaeological Research Services, L L C, Stars L L C, for an archaeological survey of Los Ebonos Golf Course as required by Texas Parks and Wildlife Department Project four-six-zero-nine-one.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, second and by Commissioner Garza. I think the cost, Commissioners, of, of this, uh, which will be paid by the county initially is, uh, I think twelve thousand, let's see, twelve thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars. That would be the base fee, best base price. And then, of course, if there are other developments that occur while they're doing the search. And this is one of the requirements, uh, as we move forward with the acquisition of the Los Ebonos Golf Course.
And it's not needed for the, for the park, Judge, for the meat and butter park?
Uh, I, you may, uh, it is, that's what we need for the Los Ebonos, but, but, uh, you'll have to ask your consultancy if it may be, it might, it may be required for that, uh, park too, but...
It might, it might be good, and, and, uh, if, if it is, you may want to reach out to the consultant.
Once a year.
Yeah, yes, to see if they can, if it's required for them to go and...
I think there's plenty of time to investigate that, Commissioner, and it's...
I don't know, seven of those courts because of the amount of land that, that has been, uh...
It is.
Is this reversible by that grant?
Well, yes, depending on how much we use for the...
Okay, okay.
So, so in the end, uh, we either, we're going to pay for it.
You're going to pay the bill upfront, and then what comes in, then that's what you have available.
Yeah, okay. So we got a motion in second, although in favor of the side?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item number...
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. And did I say the name of the, of the group? Yes, stuff, uh...
Yes, Judge.
Thirty-five, to award contract to Premier Engineering for engineering services for the Falcon Lake Ramp Improvements, Texas Parks and Wildlife Department Grant Project.
I'll move.
Motion by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Mendoza. And the scope of that work is, I guess, is, uh, early on, as to what, what improvements are, are being considered to...
What we, what we estimated for that, Judge, was, um, when we have, uh, the fishing tournaments, there is, um, maybe a hundred, hundred and fifty, uh, entries. And we only have the one ramp that we just recently, uh, widened or improved, being at the low level that it is. And it takes probably eight hours or more for everybody to launch from, if they're in on from that spot. And, um, where we had submitted an application already on behalf of the county, where we were proposing a new ramp in the team facility, but on the west end of the ramp. So instead of coming on the south end, then you would come on the west end, it's just a straight, uh, well, we're proposing a straight ramp. So that would be, um...
And that would be used when, when the lake levels are, are higher, or are you going to go all the way down?
No, we, we want, it, it, we would want to go as far as we can with the lake levels that there are at the time.
Currently.
Yeah, right now.
It seems to be normal now, I mean, unfortunately.
And now it's really not. So if we're able to build it now, or we get the funding now, it's ideal because you're at, almost at an all time low. You're at probably elevation two fifty eight or real close to that.
Two sixty.
Two sixty.
Two sixty.
So we're at elevation two sixty, where we're normally, our normal pool level should be three oh one.
Three oh one.
And we usually fluctuate between two sixty and two eighty. So if we're at two sixty, we're at the low end of what we would, you know, be and we can build out as far as we, we would.
I think that'd be.
We, you know, normally we don't, we don't see the bridge and, and with, without any water, so that's, this is.
So that would be the grant, any other enhancements to the park or?
Uh, we did, um, I would need to consult with Mr. Paulina Vargas, because what I provided him was the, um, the size and the length of the ramp that was being proposed.
Okay.
And I think there's also, there is some water, so we're, uh, in the area for the park. They had, there had been, uh, some talk about adding another restroom closer to the parking area, because the one that they currently have, it's a little bit of a walk in.
And I believe some fish cleaning stations.
Fish cleaning stations.
We're also.
So, yeah, that funding is, is, uh, is coming, so. We're, we're close to.
And I believe it was seven hundred and fifty thousand or something like that.
Yes, something like that.
So just begin the month.
Okay, very well, very good. Thank you. Uh, so we got a motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number thirty six is to award contract to Carlos Corina Vargas and Associates for the management services for the Falcon Lake Ramp Improvements, Texas Parks and Wildlife Department Grant Project.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, seconded by Commissioner Gasa, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So, yeah, Mr. Vargas has, uh, been acting as a partner since the funding. So, hopefully we can continue this relationship. We've got some, uh, consent items.
On the country, what, Father Judge?
Thirty eight, thirty nine, fourteen, forty one are line item transfers, motion by Commissioner Gasa to approve.
There's forty two and forty three also.
Also.
Yeah.
Okay, forty two and forty three. And they are all line item transfers. I guess we have the available funds?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we got a motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mendoza, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll move on to, uh, resolution to proclamations, uh, number forty five. Is a proclamation occurring the week of October eighteenth through the twenty third, twenty twenty one as Chamber of Commerce Week in Zapata County?
Can I have the proclamation? Can I read it out loud?
Yes.
Uh, proclamation reads, uh, Chamber of Commerce Week, whereas more than three thousand chambers of commerce in the United States distinguish themselves as the voice of business. And whereas more than three hundred chambers of commerce in the state of Texas actively provide services to their communities. And whereas the work accomplished by the Zapata County Chamber of Commerce has benefited our community through their economic development, tourism promotion and community development programs. And whereas the Zapata County Chamber of Commerce unseasonably promotes our community for quality growth and development. And whereas the business community represented to the Zapata County Chamber of Commerce has been a driving force in fostering enhanced educational opportunities, infrastructure improvements, leadership development, job creation and a positive vision of the future. And whereas the Zapata County Chamber of Commerce in our community has and continues to seek to achieve successful results for our community in a cooperative spirit with other organizations. And whereas the Zapata County Chamber of Commerce has proudly represented the business community in Zapata County since nineteen forty eight. And whereas the Zapata County Chamber of Commerce has been a strong partner with the county of Zapata in endeavors to promote and develop our local business community. And I therefore be a proclaim of the Zapata County Commissioners Court hereby proclaim the week of October eighteenth through the twenty third, twenty twenty one as Chamber of Commerce Week in Zapata County.
Motion move.
Motion by Commissioner Gasa, seconded by Commissioner Elison, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number forty six is to approve resolution in support of the temporary closure of U S Hybrid E three for Zapata Kami High V Hawk Fest Parade on September twenty ninth, twenty twenty one.
Motion move.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, seconded by Commissioner Gasa, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We've got one hell of a football team this year. Doing really well. Uh, we've got executive session?
Yeah, I make a motion to go to section, section.
Item, motion by Commissioner Gasa, turn to the executive session. Seconded by Commissioner Mendoza, uh, and the item to be heard is personnel issues uh, from the Water Plant Director, Mr. Ralph Venial, it is the item to be heard and that will be heard under section five five one point zero seven four, personnel matters and five five one point zero seven one. Consultation with attorney, we are now in the executive session.
Aye.
Bye bye.
Thank you, guys. Bye, Deacon.
Bye. Bye.